Change the ordinance.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, you please rise. Join Councilman Buthroyd in our platiquing.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rain standing for our prayer.
Will you pray with me? Okay, we just thank you for today. We thank you most of all for this gentle rain that is getting us ready for new life and spring. And so as we get ready to meet tonight, we pray for wisdom, we pray for discernment, we pray for our community, we pray for these leaders and thankful for them and their time, the unappreciated work that they do and so thankful for their time and their love for your community and your people. May you bless them in their endeavors. It's in your son's precious name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank Pastor Field. Call to order, our special Public Works Authority meeting of February 22nd. Item two on the agenda is public comments, announcements, recognitions. We don't have any of that for our... I'm sorry, I guess we do. We have Joe Cravens. You want to come and identify yourself, your address if you would, and the topic that you'd like the council to entertain.
Okay, thank you, sir. My name's Joe Cravens. I live at 1424 West Warner in Ward III. I was here a couple of years ago, I believe in September or October of 2015, to talk about the noise ordinance. At that time, a bar that my band played at quite a bit, a halftime bar and grill, just about a half a block or so west of here, received somewhere between, I think, 70 and 80 noise complaints by one individual. And at that time, my understanding was we were going to set up a workshop to look at the noise ordinance. As it stands, I don't believe it currently distinguishes between commercial properties and residential, and I don't believe it has any quantitative measurable instruments in it as far as using decimals. I believe it's something like it's audible within 50 feet. So your ears are probably a lot better than mine after playing in the band. But I just thought, I wanted to come up here because now the new owner that's running that establishment, it's known as Roosters, is receiving noise complaints again from one individual that lives by the railroad tracks, and he's complaining about noise.
Okay, so Mr. Cravens, you're asking that that be a topic for a workshop
Yes.
in the future, that our noise ordinance be revisited and be a topic
Exactly.
for a workshop?
And I know Cheryl's not here. I've communicated with Cheryl. She seems to be supportive of it. Jeff and I have talked, and Jason and I have messaged back and forth. So I would appreciate a workshop. I'd be happy to help any way I can and offer my services to that.
Okay, we'll work towards that endeavor and clarification.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
All right, thanks.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
Third item on the agenda is our consent agenda. We have only one item on the consent agenda. Item A, which is the approval of the minutes of Guthrie Public Works Authority Meeting of February 6th. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Submit your votes, please. Let's see the votes. Unanimous approval to accept the minutes of February 6th of the Public Works Authority, Guthrie Public Works Authority Meeting. Item number four, discussion and possible action on resolution number 2018-04, designating sources of leveraged matching funds for a CBD grant application to help fund our water system improvement project.
I'd like to hear about that.
Staff comments?
I'm handing out a sheet that kind of highlights the elements of the CDBG grant application. There's several agenda items on both the Public Works Authority Agenda and the regular City Council meeting agenda that tie into this. So what I thought I would try to do is kind of go through this and the various agenda items once rather than have to go over it many, many times as we get to each item.
Okay.
And so we are looking at applying for a Community Development Block Grant, which people shorten by the initial CDBG. The CDBG grant is administered by the Oklahoma Department of Commerce for Small Cities. The application deadline is May 1st, 2018, by 5:00 PM if we're going to apply for this round of applications. We have requested assistance from Millie Vance, who is a grant writer that comes highly recommended from Department of Commerce and other communities. She has done CDBG grant work for us in McAllister when I was there, and does a great job. It's a competitive grant, so she helps us groom the grant to get as many points in the process we can to be successful in getting the grant. It's her recommendation that we request $299,999 in grant. We would match that with a local match out of our Public Works Authority funds, So it'll be a $600,000 project, roughly half of it grant, half of it from our utility fees in the Public Works Authority. The project description, we're trying to concentrate as we talk about how old our water lines are and replaces those, and also the valves that we have that no longer function and need to be replaced. Is the water main replacement along US 77 over Bird Creek, water main replacement along College from 14th to 11th Street, and the water main replacement on 16th from Logan Avenue to College Avenue, water main along Noble Avenue from 16th Street to 12th Street, and then water main abandoned replacement along Cleveland from 16th to 11th, and then a series of valve installations to improve some of our outdated valves. So the total construction estimate is $510,300. Engineering fees, construction stacking, and inspection services total $65,700, and the grant administration fees, $24,000, is the breakdown of how the $600,000 would be used. On the Public Works Authority, the meeting that we're in now, items four, five, six, and seven on the agenda all have to do with this grant. The first one, item four, resolution number 2018-04, is designating $301,000 of Public Works Authority funds as leverage or matching funds for the grant. Item number five is an action on an agreement with Millie Vance Incorporated for administrative services for the grant. If the CDBG grant is not funded, there will be no charges for Millie's services. If the grant is funded, the administrative fee is 8% of the grants or $24,000. I can tell you that I have done Community Development Block Grant work many, many times, and administered grants and wrote grants under this program, and it's one of the most time-consuming federal programs and detailed-oriented as you can get. So that fee is not out of line considering the amount of paperwork that has to be processed and the number of meetings you have to attend. Number six would be action on Myers Engineering Task Order 131 for Engineering Services. This is a competitive grant, and to be eligible, you have to have the project design and construction drawings completed before you apply. You have to have your permit approved by DEQ in order to be competitive and get this grant. The cost of the engineering, if you look at the 65 sevens, roughly 13% of the $510,000 construction. Number seven is a resolution 2018-05, amending resolution number 2016-03, master fee resolution by modifying the water rate schedule in Exhibit A. Points awarded in the rating process for the first 5,000 gallons is a stair step to encourage conservation of water usage. This is not a water rate increase. Actually, it's a rate adjustment. The rate adjustment is a slight decrease. If you look right now, the first 2,000 gallons will stay the same, $15.35 for minimum bill, and I'm using the residential fee as the example here. 2,000 to 3,000, currently it's $675. That would go down to $6.65. 3,000 and one gallon to 4,000 would go from $675 to $670, and 4,001 to 5,000 would go, stay the same at $675. But that will garner us points in the application process because we have stair stepped the rate schedule for the first 5,000 gallons of water use. It will not have a significant impact on our revenue. But if you look at the first 5,000 gallons, right now you pay $35.60 on residential, you would pay $35.45. So actually goes down 15 cents. So this is not a rate increase, the way we structure it.
And the whole purpose is just to meet the...
To get points to get the grant.
For the grant.
Then the next meeting, I'll go here through this since I'm explaining it. The next meeting, item two of our City Council, we will conduct a public hearing on the proposed grant application. And then on our consent agenda, the City Council will concur with actions four, five, and six of what we do at the Public Works Authority. They will not, you will not, as City Council, concur with the rate adjustment because we want to keep that separate when it comes to rate issues. The authority makes decisions relative to utility rates, not the City Council. And then four, five, and six on the special City Council meeting, resolution number 2018-03 is the resolution to authorize us to submit the grant application to Department of Commerce. Number five is adopting a citizen participation plan for the grant project. That's a minimum requirement to receive the CDBG funding. And number six is adoption of a residential anti-displacement and relocation assistance plan for the project. Again, a minimum requirement to receive the CDBG funding, but we will not be displacing anybody or purchasing property and dealing with relocation. So we will not be affected by this, but it's part of the process, and we have to adopt it even though we don't foresee that we will be impacted by it. It's just a minimum thing you have to adopt. So that kind of walks you through all the items on the agenda for this meeting and our next meeting in City Council relative to this grant application. And that kind of gives you an idea of how cumbersome the paperwork is for these grants, but you get half your project paid for virtually.
So, quick question on the grants, because we have multiple grants going on at this time, and we've got grants going on on multiple fronts. This is the first time I've seen a grant administration fee. Maybe not. Maybe it's been there and I just haven't recognized it. I would thought that by this time in our city's growth, we would have been looking to have that in-house full-time, especially with as many grants as we have working at the same time on different projects.
I've, my first job when I got out of college in 1979, I worked for the city of Wichita Falls, and I did the CDBG grant. We had four people in our office that administered that grant. And, but we got annually, because we were entitled to the city, we got about $3.2 million.
Nice.
And I've done CDBG grants my entire career. And the amount of time that it takes and the effort to stay on top of any changes to the paperwork required, it's labor intensive.
So it's different than a regular grant on trying to do streetscapes and that type stuff?
Absolutely. The amount of administration is tenfold for one of these grants than it is for the other type grants we've been applying for.
So even if we have, if I'm hearing you right, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, but if I'm hearing you correctly, or how I'm understanding it is is that if we had someone full-time doing grants, we would still be looking at Millie's expertise on this particular one?
Absolutely, for two reasons. The expertise, and number two, because she does these all over, she can do it quicker than we can, and we would not, it would be more, better use of our time of us doing other things than administering this grant.
Okay. Plus, plus the risk, if we don't get the grant, there's no fee, there's no charge. No, right. This is just the first time I saw this because you haven't been involved in these at this point until this one. And so I was wondering, where's the administration fees on all these other grants that we got jumbling in the air out here? I assume they're all just being done internal?
Correct.
Or... Like the one Eric did.
Or our engineer helps us with part of it as well as part of their process. But the workload of the administrative effort is significantly lower on all those grant applications.
Okay, I get it. Thanks for answering that. I've got a question on the water mains, the water mains that were abandoned, the two mains, Cleveland, along Cleveland. So they were abandoned. I'm assuming that there was some other mechanism of getting water to those people that were served. And is that the reason why we want to replace them? If they were abandoned, why would we replace them?
Well, what happened was the, there was a main constructed parallel to these two existing mains 20 years ago, and the two old mains never got abandoned properly. So the services are still on the old mains, and there are constant maintenance problems. So we're just going to abandon those two mains and just move the services over to the new main that was put in 20 years ago.
So it's not putting in a new main, just moving it to a new main?
Yeah, if we're talking about the one on...
Cleveland from 10th to 11th.
Four inch and a six inch main to be abandoned.
Right. They just, they just didn't abandon them in 1995, and it's getting to be a problem now. So the services are still on the old main, so they're constantly fixing the old main, simple fixes, just move everything over to the new main and then do cut and plugs on the old main.
And we have some other parts of town that are similar to this.
So what's happening with the new main? Nothing going through the new main?
No, the new main's in service, so you have three lines parallel on each other.
Okay, I see.
And we just, they just didn't abandon them in 1995.
So on the Noble Avenue line, is that because it's a highway, the difference in pricing?
I'm sorry.
The Noble Avenue project?
Yes, that's a very intense line. We have sidewalks, we have driveways, we have, it's a very intense area. But the line is horrible.
That's Norbert.
I live over there.
You do? Okay. Well, you'll be, it's going to be a good thing to have that replaced.
I have to replace my sediment filter every month.
Well, wait a minute, that's on the west side. Isn't that all opened up right now? All the sidewalks are gone, all that's history?
Up to, I think, 12th. We're going to 16th. We're going from 16th back east to where they're stopped.
Okay.
So we've already replaced all that, by the way, from the bridge back to about 11th. We did that under the highway project.
Yeah.
Would this, would we be tearing up the sidewalks in this project?
Yes.
And half the driveways and...
Everything.
It's just the right of ways tied, and that's, we'll be putting them back, though, as part of this. So it's going to be a better situation. That's good.
So there's more expensive.
All right, Bill, thank you very much. Any other questions of staff or any of our specialists on these particular projects?
No, I think it's a good idea.
You know, I'm going to make a motion to approve it.
I will second that.
Okay, this is item number four.
Good idea.
Approving the CDB grant application. We have a motion, we have a second. Any other discussion?
Brian, they're going to add this to your water bill. Just want to let you know that.
They're going to add it to my water bill?
Yes, just yours only. Nobody else's water bill.
Hey, I got fat pockets, man. I'll write a big fat check.
It'll bounce all the way down the...
It'll bounce everywhere you want it to go. Okay, no other discussion? Submit your votes. See the votes. Unanimous approval from all those present to approve resolution 2018-3, confirming our...
Four.
Four, I'm sorry. Confirming our 2018 CDBG grant. I'm sorry, I'm on the city one. Well, that's the matching fund part of it that we just approved. I'm sorry. Okay, item number five, discussion, possible action on the agreement with Millie Vance concerning the administrative services for that particular grant. It's been already presented to us. I'd make a motion to approve that as well. A motion and a second. Any other discussion? Submit your votes. We're going to send that one to Jeff Taylor when he gets all his business squared away. Let's see the votes. Unanimous approval from all those present to move on the agreement with Millie Vance for administrative services on that CDBG grant. Myers Engineering told me that he was going to sleep on this next one, just in case he had... Item number six, Myers Engineering Task Force, Task Order, I'm sorry, 131 for Engineering Services for this subject grant. Grant. Motion to approve, second. Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Submit your votes. See the votes. Unanimous approval to move on the Myers Engineering Task Order 131. Item number seven, action concerning the resolution 2018-5, amending the master fee resolution, modifying the water rate schedule as identified in Exhibit A. That's been presented to us. Question on this one, real quick, before we do anything. How difficult would it, what would the impact be if we got a little more aggressive on the reduction? Just a little.
We can't fund what we need to do now. So I don't...
We're relying only, okay.
I don't know without a study that we would want to reduce water rates when we can't fund all the things we need to do now with the Public Works Authority with water and service.
The good news is our tax revenues are up and above projections, right?
Correct. But typically, water and wastewater utilities are operated as enterprise funds, which means that you try to operate them with user fees, the users pay for the service, very similar to business. Sales tax is normally used for general for fund purposes to fund services that do not generate a revenue source, parks.
Well, the good news for this, I think, will be, and I just want to be real clear on it, moving forward on this, what I call non-sexy infrastructure, under-the-ground stuff, there's going to, we're going to be able to go for multiple grants on fixing all of our community eventually. Is that correct?
We plan, and this may not address all of them fast enough, but we plan to apply for a CDBG grant every year going forward that we are eligible so that we can leverage our funds and basically double our funds that we're spending on water line replacements.
Okay. A lot of work to do, though, as we all know, in that regard. Okay.
Mayor, I do have a question. The reason that our rates are where they're at right now, what would it look like if we, is it because of maintenance? Is it because of wear and tear on a really old system? Why are our water rates where they're at, Leroy?
We, I've not been here when a rate study has been done, so I don't have the information to provide a lot of details. But I can tell you, Kim sent me a deal today that shows water rates of all the cities, and we're by far not the highest, we're not the lowest. But to address water rates and sewer rates, you would have to do a study, and it would have to be based on what it costs to provide the service. And without having one of those in front of me, it would be difficult to answer that question. But I can tell you clearly, we are running with minimum crews. We are not maintaining our system. If you look at, you know, our infrastructure, 100-year-old lines, we're trying to figure out a way to find a new wastewater treatment plant. The likelihood of us doing a study and saying, oh, by, we need to cut our rates in half is probably pretty unlikely because we have so many things and we have limited resources. It just doesn't appear to me, but again, without a study, I can't give you a definitive answer that the city's going to be in position to lower their utility rates for quite some time.
Well, I think a lot of people, of course, the rates to them are, they think they're high. And, and maybe they are, maybe they're not, I don't know. I haven't made that comparison myself either. But because of the age of our water lines, I know you can go to the water treatment plant, or to the, not the water treatment plant, but to the water plant, and taste that water, and it's like drinking Ozarka water. But by the time it gets to my house and many other homes in town, it no longer tastes that way. So what we're doing right now by doing this is improving some of those water lines.
Correct.
And then you're going to continue to put in for grants each year to try to improve on...
Absolutely. Now, whether that gets it done at the pace we want to do, because there's only 600,000 dollar projects at a time, we may have to step that up and look at other funding possibilities as well to do it at a timely manner that would provide the services demanded by our residents. We haven't done that study yet to look at a total line replacement. But clearly, if you've got lines that are 100 years old that you have built up a lot of deferred maintenance that is an unfunded liability that you've never set money aside. And as a city, we're going to have to figure out, you know, what kind of rate structure is it going to take to bring our lines up to a certain standard and then have a plan in the future where there is a rotation or systematic replacement or maintenance of those lines? Now, we're not unique. You could probably go to any city in Oklahoma and hear the same speech because water lines, things under the ground have been forgotten or ignored by cities throughout the United States and Oklahoma. So, I mean, I'm not being critical of who was here in the past, but that's just the way it's been. The cities just have not developed plans for utility lines that are under the ground. They're there and they're forgotten.
So since we settled the rural water deal, Mission Hills is now on rural water, correct?
Correct.
So you've seen a difference in your billing with Guthrie and the billing with rural water, and I've owned homes outside of rural water as well, and the rates are through the roof compared to rural water. And I mean absolutely through the roof, and I hate to say that, but they are. And we need a water study because, again, what needs to happen here at one point, we got to replace the infrastructure, I understand, and we have to do that. And that's what I campaigned on originally. But we also need to give some back somewhere to the community here because, Ed, you know, your bills are crazy high. And we, here's another deal. We make decisions on this council, and we don't, I use rural water, Jeff uses rural water, you use rural water, you use rural water, okay? And the majority of the people on this council aren't using city water because they live outside of it, okay? So it's time to stand up and take a look at, you know, where are we? How can we help the people by maybe taking a cost reduction in one area? Maybe we got to increase somewhere else, okay? But to give some kind of relief.
Maybe that's why I asked the question, because I drink city water.
Exactly.
So, you know, I do have to...
That's exactly right.
I don't think...
And I appreciate that question.
I don't think we can address it without doing a...
Rate study?
A rate study of our utility fees versus our potential cost. And not only the operating cost, but what the cost is to actually maintain the improvements in the system, the water lines. I mean, we have to main, even though the water plant is doing a good job, you still got to maintain it. So all those costs have to be built in.
I know, I know.
A rate study, and at some point, I think we'll be in a position, that's what we will want to do, is do a rate study. Right now, we're trying to get a handle on the cost of what it would take to replace all the lines. We're working on the cost of a new wastewater treatment facility. Some of those are things we need to do first before we enter into the rate study phase.
And we have reduced the note on the water treatment plant by refinancing it and reduced that money at one point as well. But the question, have you noticed a significant drop in your water bill compared to what it was?
Unfortunately, timing, I was only on city water for either one billing cycle or two.
Okay, so you didn't get to see it.
So I was not on city water long enough that I would make enough comparisons.
Okay. All right, I'll entertain a motion on that, amending that resolution.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? Submit your votes, please. See the votes. Unanimous approval to amend resolution 201...
See the votes, unanimous approval to amend Resolution 201 Section 3, the Master Fee Resolution to reflect the water rates on Exhibit A that was given to us. With that, ladies and gentlemen, our Public Works Authority meeting is adjourned, and I'll call to order our special city council meeting, February 27th. We have a public hearing on the proposed 2018 CBDG grant application. Is there anybody in the public domain that would like to speak?
Isn't that the one we just went through with?
That's the one we just had the whole.
The, the presentation I made would be germane to this public hearing, but the other thing would be, if we had any citizens that had questions, we would be glad to address those, any input they had on the project, we'd be glad to hear that, and that's the primary purpose of the public hearing.
Hearing none, we will move to item number three, which is consent agenda items A through G. A is the approval of our city workshop of February 6th, B is approval of our minutes of city council meeting of February 6th, C is declaring select city property as excess, D is approval of an amendment to city property lease agreement hanger number 25, E is confirmation of the CPWA action on Resolution 2018-4, F is the confirmation of our agreement with Millie Vance on said grant, grant application, and G is the confirmation of our action with Myers Engineering Task Order 131 on said grant. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Motion and second on consent agenda items, is there any discussion on any of those items? Submit your votes.
All votes are in.
See the votes, unanimous approval to approve all consent agenda items A through G. Item number four, discussion, possible action on Resolution 2018, dash, now, should that be four?
That's all three.
Three?
We just did four.
Confirming the submission of our grant application with the Oklahoma Department of Commerce to fund water improvement project.
So moved.
Take it.
Any discussion? Submit your votes.
All votes are in.
See the votes, unanimous approval of Resolution 2018-4. Item number five, discussion of possible action to adopt the Citizen Participation Plan to fund a water system improvement project, that the grant, again, is presented by staff.
So moved.
Entertained a motion.
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Submit your votes.
All votes are in.
See the votes, unanimous approval to adopt the participation plan as identified by staff for the, the said grant application. Item number six, adopting a residential anti-displacement and resolution relocation, I'm sorry, assistance plan in the grant application.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
Yeah, can, can you be a little more clear on that? We didn't go through that on the last.
When you use federal money, if you purchase property, if you have to relocate something, like you buy a house somebody lives in, there's a 1970 Uniform Acquisition and Relocation Act, and you have to pledge that you're gonna follow that, because you have to meet certain relocation assistance requirements if you relocate somebody. If you purchase property, you have to go through a process where you use an appraisal and a review appraisal depending on the value, and all you're doing is pledging that you will do that. Right now, we don't foresee that we're gonna have to acquire any additional right of way, we're not gonna be buying anybody's house, so this really will have no impact on us, but as part of the grant process, if you want the money, you follow their procedures, and they require you to adopt this to be eligible to get the grant.
Okay. Okay, we had a motion and a second, any other discussion? Submit your votes.
All votes are in.
See the votes, unanimous approval to adopt the Residential Anti-Displacement Relocation Assistance Plan. Item number seven, discussion concerning the Fire EMS department, including budget, funding, manpower, service, territory. Staff?
I'm gonna go over a couple of spreadsheets to give you an idea of talking about Fire and EMS, how complicated this can be. I, I'd like to just first start out, it's complicated, and there's many factors involved in figuring out our fire department and EMS staffing and funding. I don't wanna get into playing the blame game, that's not what we're here for, it's looking at where we're at, where we're going, and then trying to develop solutions that work for our community. One thing I will let you know, in the interim, it's not an answer, but working with the fire chief, we have funded a additional firefighter EMS to provide some relief while we're studying this issue and trying to come up with a more permanent solution, and that additional firefighter will be a floater and be assigned as needed to different relief shifts where firefighters are off duty, so at least that gives us a little bit of relief by adding that one back. Doesn't answer our problem. The, as we all know, in 2017, in our mid-year budget, we had a reduction of force where we decided not to re-hire three firefighters through attrition. That has been further complicated by our current situation or compounded, because we have two vacant positions, we had one leave probably for higher pay, we had one leave because they relocated with their significant other, and then we have one out on injury leave, and we have one on maternity leave, so, all these things compounded makes the situation even more serious than if we had not had one or the other reduction of force or all of these people out. Going over this, what I've looked at is from 2008 coming forward to our current year budget, and you can see, starting in '08, we had 22 employees, in '09, we went to 25, we remained at 25 employees till 2014, then we went to 28 employees in the Fire and EMS, and we remained there until we did our mid-year budget, and as you remember, we eliminated 11 positions, not just the fire department, but across the board, we had four layoffs and then seven positions that weren't filled, we froze those or eliminated them. So now, we are currently in the FY18 budget, have 25 employees in Fire and EMS. If you look at the next roll down, we, we try to give the history of EMS incidents and fire incidents, and if you look at '09, we had 1,728 EMS incidents and 297 fire incidents, for a total of 2,025. If you come forward to 2016, as a comparison, the EMS incidents, 2,336, fire incidents, 378, or a total of 2,714 responses.
Could I ask a quick question on that line item? So, how much of that is in our school district area?
It, it's a little bit difficult to address, because the way we've kept our records, we have not separated it out as much, but Eric might be able to give us some idea.
No, I didn't realize that. So, my understanding from our last workshop was that the majority of what was going on was outside of Guthrie city limits, that's what we talked about in the workshop.
Outside the city limits, but, but within the school district, because our EMS covers the Guthrie school district.
Because if we gotta go straight south, it's still in the school district.
You roughly got, I, I don't have a, a good, I don't have a, a number I can document for you, but, you know, we're sitting here a town of 12,000, we've got, we got roughly 20,000 residents between here and the county line.
Yeah.
So, we're serving an area that's bigger than our city limits.
Yeah, the EMS district is.
That's right.
Larger than, than the city limits.
But anyway, if you look at this, over that period of, of eight years, our EMS runs have increased by 570, 32%, our fire runs have increased by 81, 27%, so they went up 651. Of that increase, 88% of the increase ties back to EMS, so that's, that's where we're really growing, is the EMS service. Fire runs, yes, it's grown, but not to the same degree. Well, that tells you, we're putting more and more pressure on the equipment and staff we have when you continue to grow at that rate. So, yes, there is a problem, clearly, on what we're doing. Now, if you look at revenue, in the blue, the ambulance fees have gone from 426,000, and I'm rounding these off in '08, to 711,000 in 2016, for a growth of $285,000. I think the fire department has done some things, they went to outside billing, they have been more diligent, of course, they're making more runs, so revenue's gonna go up, but looking to the ambulance fees as the solution, there's not a silver bullet, it's gonna take many things to solve this, but when you look at the reimbursement rates for Medicaid, Medicare, the negotiations with insurance carriers that are very large, the opportunity to generate more money from the fees for ambulance service is pretty limited going forward in the future. Now, if we make more runs, of course, it will go up, but you can charge all you want, but the reimbursement rate's still gonna be the same, you'll just get a smaller percentage of your invoice paid. The EMS district, which is the school boundaries of the Guthrie Public School, they can levy up to three mils of property taxes, inside the city limits and outside the city limits in the school district. We got $258,000 from them in '08, and it has worked its way up to 350,000, or a $92,000 increase. Again, as the value of the improvements in the school district and the city go up, then that three mils will generate more revenue, but it's not gonna grow fast enough on its own to address our problem.
So, Leroy, let me ask you this, on EMS alone, we spent 848,016, right? Is that correct?
Uh, expenditures are on down below, so I'm not sure where.
Talking about on EMS, I'm talking about the Fire EMS revenue. Okay, so that's not the expenditure, I'm sorry.
That's the revenue.
That's the revenue.
Now, in addition to the contract we have with EMS, they also, because they can only give a certain percentage of their revenue each year, and then they accumulate, and over time, they give us money to buy ambulances. And the periodic, you could see in '08, I highlight it in yellow, we got 89,000, and '16, we got 114,000, and we got some grants and some FEMA reimbursements in '16, that was an outlier, or one-time funding, 295. I didn't use those in my calculations, and again, I will admit, I'm not an economist by any means, and this is an oversimplification problem, but I'm trying to give you a feel for, for what's going on. If you look at general funds, in '08, we had to, and, and subsidized is probably not a good word to use, but we had to invest 712,000 out of the general fund to supplement the revenue stream in the fire department. If you look in '16, that had went up to a million two, so it had grown 470,000, and you can see, if you go over to the mid-year adjustment, we had to put 1.6 million dollars, an additional 400,000 in from the general fund.
So, we really don't know, if we look at 2016, for example, as a year, we don't know between the revenue and the expenditures, what was EMS versus what was fire, right?
They're not.
What I'm trying to find out is, what we, here's, I know, I see what we brought in on EMS, but what did, what was the cost?
Part of the problem we run into, Brian, is it's hard to break it out, because every person on our entire staff is cross-staffed.
Yeah, exactly, that's what I'm saying.
So, there's, when you look at your manpower numbers, in terms of salaries and benefits and personnel costs, there's no real accurate way to put a, a manpower cost on there, because they're doing both functions.
Well, but if we took the runs, we could actually take the incidents and formulate that into an equation based on the fire, but not near, not really, because if you have a house fire, that's a three-hour deal, you have a field fire, that's four days.
And same thing on an ambulance call, it may be a, a 15-minute deal, if it's here in town and they don't want transported, it may be a three-hour deal, if it's a law, you know, a long-term accident on the interstate or something.
It's difficult to segregate it out.
So, what did?
I can tell you this, 86, last time I ran the numbers, about 85, 86% of our activity on runs.
Is EMS.
Is related to EMS.
So, there's what I'm, that's kinda where I'm going with this, let me ask a question.
Well, I have, one more, may I ask a question on top of that? You do log all your runs out and back, though?
Yes.
And time, and so you do have some way to.
Find out.
Find out where that is, I mean, you said it was basically 15, well, that's out and outlying.
Average ambulance call is anywhere from, and there's so many variables on there, depending on where the transport's made to, you know, they're anywhere from, you know, a short one here in town is probably a 45-minute ordeal to an hour and a half, so you're looking 45 minutes to 90 minutes, roughly. If it goes to the city, you're talking 20, 25 minutes down, 20, 25 minutes back, however long you spend on scene with a patient, and then how long it takes you to get in and out of the ER where you're taking the patient.
Now, that's billed all at the same amount, though, I take it, over that.
Well, there's mileage, but the base rates are, well, there's a, a basic life support base rate, there's an advanced life support bait rate, base rate, and then there's mileage, which, we have a mileage rate fixed in our billing structure, but Medicare, Medicaid has their own rates that we're forced to take, so, which are significantly less.
So, what do we do before our own ambulance, EMS service?
Funeral homes. But I'm, I'm not lying, we literally, the fire department literally took EMS over from the funeral homes in the 70s.
So, the funeral homes did it?
Yep, that was pretty much.
So, but the other neighborhood, what does everybody else do? I mean, it just seems like we're so far underwater on this deal because of the EMS deal, I'm, I'm not faulting anything.
Well, no, it's, I mean, you look at the metro area, and you've got IMSA, which is getting a large subsidy from every municipality that they're serving, which it's tagged on to their utility bills. You look at Stillwater, they're in a similar boat, they have a third-party service, but it's funded by utility revenue, via the rural areas on their electric bills, and then the municipalities are putting it on their, their water and sewer bills.
Before we get too far off, if I can finish my presentation, I think it, it will give some clarity to, to some things. But anyway, if you look at general fund, the amount of increase from '08 to '16 was 470,000 additional dollars from the general fund, which represents 55% of the additional money going to pay for fire and EMS. So, the significant amount of increase has been through the general fund, not through other sources of revenue, the fire district, or the EMS contract, or the fees. Now, if you look at the expenses in '08, and I've broken them down into personnel services, material supplies, service and charges, capital outlay, and debt service, and total expenditures in '08 was just under 1.5, 1,000,000.5. In '16, it was just. In '16, it was just under 2.8 million. So in that eight years, our expenditures had grown 1.3 million dollars, or roughly 87 percent, or 11 percent a year. And 65 percent of that increased expense was personnel, which would be understandable. Then what I tried to do is look going forward, and if we continue to increase at that pace, not compounding it, but just add 11 percent for five years, our costs would roughly go up $300,000 on average each year. If we were going to fund that out of sales tax, out of the general fund, our sales tax just to fund the fire department and EMS would have to grow roughly 6 percent every year. I don't think it's a sustainable model.
It's not, it's not gonna happen.
We can't break us.
One of the problems, as I laid it to earlier, you've got a city of roughly 11,000 people, but we're serving an EMS district where you got roughly 20,000 outside the city limits between here and...
But nobody can give me that number of our cost versus revenue on that, you know? And that's a problem. I need to have, it's like any other business decision, Leroy. I need to know, just like in my business, what's my cost versus what's my revenue? I mean, what's my revenue, my margins, everything else?
I understand that, and we're trying to get to that. We're just getting started. I mean, you know, it took me a couple hours to put the spreadsheet together.
I thought you'd done this in 40 minutes.
They probably did.
But I think the point...
Can we have another workshop on this? Is that what we need to do, probably?
When we get there. If I could finish, I think what this shows is, yes, there is a need for manpower. I mean, our service calls have went up. You can't continue to serve what we're doing with the manpower we have. There's no question there. The other thing is on the funding side, is, yes, if you need manpower, but you got to pay those people, and you gotta have a funding source to do it. There is probably not a silver bullet or one thing, it's gonna be a combination of things we do. What I think we need to do at this point is step back and do a five-year budget, and project what our revenues and costs, and try to do as much cost centers as we can to show where those costs can be divided. Some of it will be more scientific-based, and some of it will be estimated, because as we indicated, it's kind of hard to separate fire and EMS. But I think we need to step back and do a five-year budget, and look at all options. You know, how do we enhance revenues? You know, we do have the three mills we're getting from the EMS district that is the school boundaries, but we also have some rural areas that aren't in an EMS district. You know, it looks like that would generate roughly 106,000 if we could come up with some mechanism to get three mills there. Well, 106,000 is not gonna address all of our problems. You know, additional sales tax from our economy as it continues to grow. The state legislators looked at approving a property tax for cities to fund public safety, fire, and police. You know, I think we should encourage them to continue to consider that at the state legislature, because three mills doesn't generate the kind of revenue stream it takes to fund this type of service. And, you know, we're gonna have to look at revisions to our EMS service area. That's not something that I'm proposing or recommending, but I think we'll have to look at all options as we go through this. So we're gonna need to take some time to go through this, and I think the first thing is just to sit down and do a five-year budget, so that we can kind of see where we're gonna be over the next five years, and then look at the options we have to add staff, but how do we fund it?
Yeah, and I thought in our last workshop, Mayor brought up that we, when we gave a certain timeline to redraw the boundary, does anybody remember what that timeline was?
Well, it was anywhere from a year to six months.
So, that's what I'm saying.
But, so why do we serve areas?
But the problem I have, that I think we need to step back on, is we can't go to the areas that aren't in EMS district and say, okay, if you come up with a mechanism to do three mills, and that generates 106,000, that's not to answer our problem. But once you tell them, hey, if you do this, you're golden, we're gonna serve you, but then you find out you need $300,000 from that area to make it work, then, so I'm not sure that we want to go forward and say, well, you do this, you're done. I think we gotta have a more detailed answer of what it takes to serve that area, so we don't commit ourselves to something that is not financial, financially workable.
Yeah, I think the mileage rate issue certainly comes into play there.
Well, let me jump, let me give you one clue, okay? You have to increase tax revenue 6.13 percent this year to meet the budget.
Right, and we're getting 3 percent.
Gotta increase it 6.1. So time is not on our side on this deal whatsoever. And I just don't want to see us all of a sudden in '19 going, whoa, hell, we didn't increase the 6.1, now we gotta increase another 5.8, which we gotta take the deficit from the 6.1 and add it to the 5.8, now we're at 9.3 or whatever the number is.
Why do we serve those areas outside of our...
Because we have to, it's a law, right?
We don't have to do anything, do we?
Chris?
I think we do.
Chris? Prior to 2010, we had to. The state had a law that the closest licensed service had to respond, so it was all geography-based, and that's how we ended up with the jurisdiction that we have now. In 2010, they passed a House bill that allowed agencies to draw their new boundaries, submit them to the State Health Department, and say, here's what I'm covering. Currently, we have a contract, the city does, with the Logan County EMS District I-1, which is the Guthrie School District boundaries. That's where the three mills of tax revenue comes in through that contract to us. Now, we cover, that's not even a half of what we cover...
Right.
Geographically. So all that outside of there pays no form of subsidy or support currently.
And all that outside there costs more to do than it does here locally.
Well, it's further distances, the roads are rougher.
Right.
You know, it's a large unincorporated area.
A lot of expense involved in doing that.
And I think that, part of what Brian was asking for, I know that you have the basic database, but it's all, it's all on paper, it's all manual. To go through that and identify how much of expense and workload is in those areas specifically, I think you have a general idea.
I mean, we have a general idea looking at zip codes, that's about as close as we can get, short of plotting each individual call on a map and looking, comparing it to a school district map, is about it.
Yeah, because what I'm saying is, if we had the number, and you said, and took Steve's recommendation, or whoever's it was in workshop, I'm not throwing you under the bus, whoever it was, and redraw the boundary, for example, and say, boom, there it is, do we solve our problem?
No.
What do you mean, no?
I think that's what...
Do we solve our financial problem by redrawing the boundary, period? Maybe?
Not necessarily, because if, if we don't, we're not, the only thing we're gonna gain is a little bit of man-hours and wear and tear on trucks for not going out there. But we're gonna lose a little bit of billing revenue.
We want a definition of what the little bit is, though.
Yeah. My understanding was that was the majority of what we were doing is going outside of our area.
No, the majority of our call volume is within the current EMS district.
It's a complicated issue, it's not one item. Now, you know, after I'd done this in two hours, I figured I had an hour left, I would complicate your life a little more.
There's more, there's more.
After I did this for two hours, I thought I'd complicate your life a little more and do one on the police department. Again, not trying to lay blame on anybody, or I'm just trying to give the facts of where we're going, and this one's not as involved, but if you look at the police department, in '08, there was 27 employees. You come forward to 2017, there are 40 employees. Now, some of those are funded by grant positions, we added dispatchers, they're not all certified law enforcement officers, but we have had a significant growth in staff. If you look at, when you adjust out the victim advocates, violence against women, grants, and reimbursement from the school district for a partial refunding of our cost of school resource officers, our expenditures in the police department went from 1.3 million to 2.6 million. So you had 100 percent increase in costs over a nine-year period. Again, if you look at that going up 11 percent a year, you've got to grow your retail sales tax 6 percent roughly every year. So if you add police and fire to sustain the kind of growth that we've seen in the past, you're gonna have to grow the sales tax 12 percent, 11 to 12 percent.
And if you miss it one time, you have to add that exponentially to the following year.
Absolutely, absolutely. So this is not a sustainable model either.
No.
So we need to come back and look at a five-year budget for the police department, because historically, our sales tax has not grown 12 percent, and we do have a few other departments that we have to put money into as well.
Oh, you mean, we can't do just police and fire?
I don't have any solutions, but...
Somebody for water lines.
But what I was trained to do tonight is, one...
Roads, bridges.
You know, we have a need. You know, there's more pressure on safety in schools, the number of people we have, number of ambulance runs we have or EMS, there's pressure, we can't handle it with the manpower we have, but at the same time, we've got to figure out an affordable approach that we can live with that is a sustainable model. So I think, if nothing else, hopefully I've showed you, we can't continue down the path that we're going, and we're gonna have to come up with some answers. I think we got a good team to try to look at that, but we're going, it's gonna take a little time to work through this, because, one, we're gonna have to look at, you know, what size area can we serve? How do we fund it, and what's the right level of manpower that we can afford? There's a lot of things to look at.
Yeah, and we're getting ready to hit the 25 percent through '18, but we are up in tax revenue, 6 percent.
We are, in sales tax.
We're up 12 percent so far this year.
Right on schedule.
Yes, but Tenny didn't get any of that.
Tenny gets nothing.
That's why I started saying, you're not gonna get that new bull.
Well, I think that...
Get him new shovels.
I think Leroy, what you, what you present out here is a good starting point, and I know it's just two pieces of paper, but I know it took an awful lot of time to put that together. There are still questions that we have, that we need to have more data points to massage. I know all you are doing that, but clearly, we need to be looking, projecting out, because I believe you've said it four times, that the current models in both of these cases are just not sustainable. Something needs to happen, and it's not gonna happen just on the revenue side, it's gonna have to happen on revenue and expense, and it's gonna take a good team to make it happen. The good news is, we've got that good team, and so it's not all bad news, it's an opportunity.
And I would like to give credit to Eric, our fire chief, and Kim, our city clerk, because they helped round up some of the numbers and helped me put this together, reviewed it and commented on it, so I appreciate their assistance in putting this together to present to you.
Okay, any other questions?
So all of a logs paper at this point, or have we switched to digital at all? Okay.
What makes it longer is you're gonna pull a log out, but some of the data that we just isn't collected as detailed as it needs to be, and that's because that's, that's just what's collected on medical stuff, it's not what school district...
So it has the address in there?
It does have an address, yes.
I may be able to help you out a little bit.
So when you all say something like, well, let's cut revenue, or let's add another position, if you see me cringe, I hope you see why.
Yeah, the big picture is much more complex.
Yeah, but what I don't want to do is, I don't want to have a workshop like we've already had on this, and then have this, and then all of a sudden be sitting here in June and still haven't done anything about it, because by then, we're halfway through the year.
I think from staff's perspective, unless we're addressed otherwise, I think our next step is to sit down and do a five-year budget for both police and fire, so that we can try to do some estimates of what our revenue stream and what our costs are gonna be going forward, and then we can play with that five-year budget to look at revenue enhancements or cost savings, what we have to do to make it match with the potential funding that we have available.
I have one final question, and I don't even know if it's permissible for me to ask, but do we have any idea, is there an estimate, like an average of what our firefighters make annually, and what our police make annually?
Yes, well, I mean, we can give you the history of the pay, but we'll also have to put it in perspective. I mean, you know, I think that we pay comparable to wages in Logan County, but that's not who we're competing against.
Yeah, that's not a livable wage.
Yeah, but that's not...
That's why I, that's why I'm asking the question.
But, but when we give you that, I think we need to do it where you've got some comparison, because we don't compete with Logan County to get firefighters, police officers. We have to compete with Edmond and Oklahoma City. Now, we'll never probably be able to pay the same as Oklahoma City and Edmond, but some of the suburbs, we should try to be competitive with them, so we'll need to prepare something where we can put it in some kind of framework or perspective, what we pay versus some of the other cities, because if I just give you the wages of firefighters, it might look outlandish, but then you see what firefighters make in other areas, you can understand that those positions demand those wages.
I was just trying to determine if it's a livable wage by itself.
A five-year, I'll tell you what, a five-year patrolman in Edmond, and I know this because the family member's applying there, is it 96 grand on the police department, five years?
Yeah, I think, I think as Leroy identified, I think, I don't think, I don't think the expectation is, is that we can raise rates to compare with Edmond. On the other side of the coin, it's been my observation, is that when we have a vacancy in fire and police, is that we have a fairly large pool of applicants. That tells you something, too. So, and that might be something to, another piece of, another data point to take a look at, but...
But we don't want to be a training center for Edmond and Oklahoma City.
No, no, that's very true.
Correct.
Very true.
Correct.
Very true. Okay, any other discussion on item number seven?
No, that was a long one, I know.
Anybody else? I heard one, I heard one, no. Okay, no action taken on that item. Number eight is the city manager report. Do you have anything else to tell us, Leroy?
I moved my city manager report to the next meeting because of putting together all this, I didn't have time for it.
Okay, all right. Item number nine is comments from members of the city council. Councilman Smedley, you want to lead the way there?
I think we definitely need to do a workshop on noise ordinances, figure out where we're gonna set with that. Thank you, staff. I know you got limited resources, but...
When would you like to try to do that?
Let's say four weeks, that'll give staff some time to prepare.
We, and then if we don't have it done, we may ask for an extension, but we'll try to do some research and give you some options at that workshop.
We've got, we've still got work to do on the signage that we just started, and are nowhere near solutions there, and now some more dialogue with EMS, fire, and police.
Right, problems don't stop coming.
They do, those opportunities are there. Okay.
And thank you, council members, and thank you, Leroy.
Councilman Bathroyd?
I just appreciate everybody, and Eric, I appreciate everything your guys do, and that's, I think that's a lot of the reason for the questions, because I don't, you know, we've got a lot of people that are overworked in different areas, for sure, maybe not so much in others, but, and then I would, you know, I think that with everything that we're going through right now, we need to make sure we're workshopping every council meeting, so that we can get as much done as we can possibly get done in the time we're allotted here.
As long as we have staff...
As long as we have agenda.
To have a fully staffed package.
I mean, not just to meet, to meet, but...
Right, right. Okay, good. Councilman Case?
And I agree with your comments with fire, in relation to fire and EMS. Nobody's trying to throw anybody under the bus. We're trying to find a solution to this, and it's gonna take a lot of questions, there's gonna be some...
this, and it's gonna take a lot of questions, there's gonna be some difficult things that we're gonna have to do and, and go through, and I appreciate your work you're putting into that, Eric, I really do, and, uh, all staff, where all staff's doing a really good job, Myers is doing a really good job, so, we, I mean-
Well, he's staff.
No.
He's on the payroll now, he doesn't charge us anymore, it's all free.
But anyway, um, I, I think everybody, everybody's doing everything they can, given the constraints they're dealt, so keep it up.
Councilman Wood.
Yes, I'll just echo all that, thank you, Eric, and thank you, uh, Leroy, for putting this together, it's an eye-opener. It gives us something that we have to sit back and take pause on, because it's not a sustainable model, we're gonna have to do something for the City of Guthrie to keep all this thing going, and to give the service that everybody has come to expect. So, thank you all for putting in the work and showing the numbers and seeing what it's all about, I appreciate it, so. And thank you for all your hard work, everybody.
Councilman Taylor.
I got about a twenty-minute speak, no, no, uh, yeah, thanks, God, I, I know everybody's patting everybody on the back, I appreciate what you guys do, it's, it's a lot of hours, especially after last week with all the snow and, and the sleet and everything else, I saw a lot of accidents, so I know the guys were out working hard, so, uh, thanks, I really appreciate y'all's hard work, and, uh, that's it.
Okay. Um, well, we, again, I state, we are fortunate from the standpoint that we, I think we've got a great team, um, not without some, uh, some challenges, uh, that I define as opportunities, but, but I think we've got a, a good team to make, to make some things happen. Um, and we've got, you know, we do have an increase in, in sales tax, and that's, you know, it's not all gloom and doom, it's just that we, uh, we've got some, we've got plenty of, of opportunities out there, uh, as to where those resources can go, and, um, and it's a challenge. Um, we do, I believe, have two upcoming vacancies on the, um, on the planning, uh, commission, on our boards, uh, so if you're interested in, in being involved with a board or a commission, uh, go to our, uh, City of Guthrie website, uh, look at the, at the volunteers for those, um, and, uh, we want to have as many of our citizens involved in, uh, having their input as we possibly can. With that-